Welcome, everybody. I'd like to call order in a town of Superior Board of Trustees special meeting from Monday, October 7, 2013. Phil, if you could call the roll.
Sure. Mayor Andrew Muckel?
Here.
Mayor William Joe Sorelli?
Here.
Justice Dilliam Doris?
Chris Hansen?
Here.
Sandy Pennington?
Here.
Justice Gamatz?
Here.
Governor Williams?
Here.
Attorney General Matt McEnany?
Here.
Attorney Attorney General Kendra Curry? And Attorney General Paul Smith?
Thanks. That brings us to the discussion of the flood event. Mr. Enany?
Thank you, Mayor. The Board had requested special meeting to discuss the 2013 flood event and the needs of those in the community that have been impacted by the flood. Attached is a list of ideas that were generated by Board members that I think you had been expressed to go through during this meeting, which we will. Staff has put together some outreach to residents as far as this floodbuster volunteer match program, going door-to-door in Original Town last week, sent out some e-blasts to see if we could connect people that have needs with those that want to volunteer, and continue to try to connect people with resources that are out there, FEMA, Red Cross, those type of agencies, to help those that might need assistance, either in information on how to get funds or assistance, or making the connection between those that need it. Had a list of attachments just for your review, and then the list of ideas that Board members had generated. With that, I would leave it up to Board discussion.
Justice Gamatz?
So, the one thing that came up after your list, I recognize a few of these, so thanks. And one thing that came up afterwards, I thought was a really dope slap one again, was much like what we've seen for some other communities where you set up a fund, a place people can donate funds, and that's missing from your list. And it's a really, really important one. It needs to happen, like these other things ASAP.
Are you talking about a nonprofit 501(c)(3)?
As fast as you can.
Donate funds here for flood victims. I don't care how you administer it, or whatever, but yes.
Is that something other towns are doing?
Yes.
Or private organizations are doing?
I thought other towns were doing it. I think that Darrell in particular mentioned one other town, and I also have seen it, for instance, on Channel 5, or Channel 7, or whatever. But I want it Superior for Superior, or for Superior, anyway. Anybody can donate, but...
So, can a town do that kind of thing?
A town can organize it. I'll look at Darrell's email.
I guess Mines has a Facebook page, and both of those city sites mention donations.
Right. And I would just say cash donations wouldn't accommodate anything else but cash.
I briefly connected with the Chamber.
Yeah, sorry. Thanks.
Sorry.
We're out of line here, but I got the call.
It's informal.
This is a pretty informal meeting tonight.
I figured. I briefly connected with the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, I'm sorry, name and address.
Excuse me. Oh, Marsha Plunk, and I'm at 210 West Williams Street, and did not get directly affected. Luckily, hit the alley, not me. But I briefly connected with the Chamber here, thinking that they could partner with you all and proceed with that. And that was last Friday, and I've been busy since, and had, didn't have a contact. The first thing they said to me was, "Who's the contact at the city that we can work with that we know this is legitimate? We know this isn't? Where's the bank account gonna go?" And all of that type of thing. So, know that they've at least been broached, and may be able to, you know, put that donation plate. She said they had three large events coming up here in the next couple of weeks, so it might be a place that we really can move forward with.
And I'm just conveying some from a coffee buzz that I had this weekend. I got a lot of comments about this topic also, and one of the things that folks implied was that when they went to town asking about town going around and asking what people needed, they were told town was not allowed to do that, and that they had to sort of come in and say, "I'm gonna go do this. Are any of you gonna join us?" And it seemed crazy to me that was the, that was what they were told when other towns had done just that thing, so...
As far as donations go?
No. Walking door-to-door to figure out what it is people need. What was the damage, and what was the problem, and what were the remediations they were going through, and all that sort of stuff.
A lot of new statistics have been gathered, and on and on and on.
So, anyway, that's... What came across was the town seemed blocking, not helping.
Justice Bennington?
Getting back to the ability to take cash donations, can we, Matt, sort of throw that at your doorstep, and you'll check with Kendra and all that?
Yeah.
If the town, for some reason, is barred from doing that, then we could put the second step into place, is to figure out.
But the whole thing needs to be ASAP.
Yeah.
This is already three weeks late.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Well, and is there a way that we could, if this isn't gonna work, set up a fund through, like, the Red Cross, where that fund is directly funneled to the town for...
Well, we can, we can obviously set some fund up with a bank, because it's done all the time.
Correct.
You know, so we can, we can figure out Phase 2, or Plan B if Plan A doesn't work.
And the first donation should be the contingency grant.
I would like to see that.
Okay. Anybody want to speak to the other issues?
I just wanted to ask you a question, kind of backing up a little bit. Matt, I had a lot of people say, a lot of people say that the drainage of town, everything worked as it was supposed to, with the exception of the Franco ditch. And I'm wondering, have we evaluated that, and can we fix that, so it doesn't happen again with the Franco ditch?
Yeah, we'll have to work with Franco and Boulder County, as far as the creek west of town, where it breached banks, and then the work that we're planning on for next year, as far as Second Avenue Bridge and the channel improvements, that's a priority as well. But we'll have to work with Franco, because that did not work.
So, we don't understand why that failed at this point.
Because we don't know what it looked like beforehand, either.
Well, it didn't look very good beforehand.
What happened mainly with the Franco was the creek breached its banks and started to overflow into the Franco ditch, which then travels along the hillside, and it started to overtop its channel and come down the hill.
The gate was also down.
So... And then they had debris that was starting to get collected down at that McCaslin point, and we, our staff was up there throughout the night, just trying to clear the debris out of there, so that...
So, that ball is already in motion?
Right. Yeah. Alex is working with Franco.
And on that question of how things worked and how they didn't work, it'd be great if, one of the complaints I got from, also from folks who attended the meeting, were that if the, the way that third was implemented allowed water to flood, to move from one property to another much too easily, and that, in fact, things that could have been barriers turned out to be waterways, almost. I'm wondering if I talk with Alex, if he could possibly just investigate that, maybe write a little memo explaining why he thinks it did, or whether he thinks it didn't work properly. If that would be great.
On third, on the south side?
On the...
West side, we drain to the northeast in this town.
I'm just thinking of the way the streets run.
Yeah.
Well, that, we're east side of the, that would have...
What part of Third, I guess?
Working with Boulder County as well.
It's a street issue, though.
Right. But there's a larger issue further west.
Well, in any case, it would be great if we could address that specific issue. Thank you.
Another issue that came up that wasn't on the list was mosquitoes and mosquito spraying. Can you tell us your plan?
Well, we have a larger contract with Boulder County for mosquito control this year that we implemented. So, Boulder County oversees mosquito control for Superior, and I think Lewisville, and the county, and other areas in the county.
Do we have a contractor that sprays?
In the past, we did. But this year, we got a better pricing if we all worked together, and then the county oversaw and stuff.
Makes sense.
That's what we did.
So, do you know what they plan to do? You know, nobody had planned on this much rain or this much standing water, so what are Boulder County's plans to spray?
Well, the, the cold temperatures we had on Friday night, I believe, the thought is that that's going to control the problem, and spraying's not gonna be necessary.
It's not controlling them.
The interesting thing is, I saw the same thing with house flies, because I hate house flies as well, and right after the cold, they seem to be subdued. But I was at a place, either yesterday or today, that they were out en masse today. So, I think we've got to be in contact.
All right. I mean, we'll follow up with Boulder County and...
Presumably, they will sample and look for West Nile.
There are samples, yeah. They were taken, they were taken every week. Last week, there was no indication of the livery, and so, but we'll follow up with Boulder County. If there's a need, we'll have them send, send the contractor out.
Okay. Other issues from people?
You mean outside this list, or are we gonna talk about this list individually, or what's involved?
The list, I think, was...
I hope it's...
No, no. Whoever put these things on the list, I guess, maybe speak to them.
Okay. So, go ahead.
Justice Williams?
I know we mentioned grants. When is the next grants? And is there any way that we can, if they're too far out, push them to the forefront?
They're scheduled to come to move to the Board on the next meeting, the 14th.
Okay.
We have one application. The Board can decide to...
One application?
For request for funds.
Through the flood process?
No, no.
Through the grant program. Okay. Well, I was, I was hoping what we were going to look at is possibly reassigning the contingency grants to flood victims immediately.
Understand. Yeah.
It'll be up to us when we have that.
He's saying in our next meeting, we get to make that exact decision, but that's one week from today, so...
Right. And, but you're bringing forward an organization...
Which we can turn down.
Okay. That's fine. But if we're all in agreement, maybe we could just kind of expedite that process and not see something that, in a week from now, is not exactly what we're talking about, anyway, and have to wait two weeks.
So, you're proposing that we just make a decision tonight to reallocate those to the flood victims?
Correct. What kind of funding decisions can we make at a special meeting?
You can give me direction.
Okay.
How much is left in the contingency grant fund?
How much is it a quarter?
Twenty-five hundred.
So, just the last quarter? Okay.
This is the very last quarter. Isn't there some funds from, that we did not assign?
That does sound familiar.
Staff can look into it.
Yeah, we want those, too.
I think there is. Just put them all together, and bring it forward in a week from now, and...
I thought you wanted to give him direction tonight.
I do. That's my direction.
We would move forward with that, Matt, and just let the applicant know that, due to the circumstances.
And whatever the amount is, twenty-five hundred or more?
Or more.
Would be put into the...
In the capacity advertised as widely as possible to all residents.
So, the question is how, I'm getting concerned then how we do the award. Just people who ask, or based upon total amount of damage, or age?
Why don't you guys call other cities and find out what they're doing, and just, and come up with some recommendations for it?
I just wonder if it'd be best to work that through somebody who's done that before, like the Red Cross.
Well, I think the suggestion, if the Red Cross is able to set up a special fund for Superior residents, that seems like would be a good way to handle the funds.
As long as it's designated.
Exactly.
Well, it's Red Cross.
I don't know if they do that or not.
Do we have an idea, based on responses you've gotten thus far from floodbusters, how many households are impacted?
Yes.
And one issue since while you're looking, that I have with both, with at least United Way, and I don't know if that happens with, with Red Cross as well, is at least with United Way, if you designate money to a certain organization, doesn't matter if you designate it, they go back and reallocate to just give you the money that they had decided beforehand your town or your cause was gonna get. And it makes no difference who has designated it. If it's anything like that, I don't, I'm not interested.
Understand.
If it has high overhead, I'm not interested.
Yeah, or get the United Way and that rest of the package.
Yes.
We want the money to go to the...
Yeah. United Way has a very high...
How many households?
They're horrible.
And it makes no difference if you say, "I want it all to go to this."
You have to look at the organization after.
Right. You'll give us some options at the next meeting.
And actually, there's two ways that we can do this with the contingency grants. One, we could use that as a town donation to the Red Cross, that we were going through the Red Cross as our mediator between funneling the funds to the residents, or if we already know for sure that town can collect that money and donate out to the residents, then we wouldn't need the Red Cross. Then the contingency grants can either be separate or in addition.
How many households affected?
So, there's been three requests for assistance that we've received, and, let's see...
But if you went door-to-door, you know...
Seventeen people have signed up to volunteer.
But if you know, but if you went door-to-door, you have a better sense of how many were actually affected than how many had yet signed up.
No, I understand. The question was through the department that we sent.
And my next question was just gonna be that, based on door-to-door, how many do we suspect? If, if we put something out over an e-blast that said the town is making available grants up to X per household, how many households do we feel would respond with legitimate flood damage?
I don't know how many would respond.
How many, when you went door-to-door, how many households were affected?
And I think this is, this is getting to a, you know, a level, degree, is this the people that are ripping off wallboard and carpets in their basement, or is this people that have had cold creek run through their house, so?
Well, the point is, there's not gonna be a great source of money. There's going to be a limited source of money by definition. We're not gonna raise half a million dollars.
There are 171 homes in Original Town, right?
A very limited source.
There's 171 homes in Original Town?
There's gonna be a limited source of funds, so if...
There's 171 homes in Sagmoor. I think there's 114 in Original Town.
Okay. So, if it's 80% of them, or 50%, can you give some order of magnitude?
Martin, do you have that number?
About the thousands that we've counted?
Just a rough guess. We're not expecting any science here.
I mean, there were some that weren't flooded.
Martin took down staff. So, a few staff members and a volunteer there in McCall took some time on Friday afternoon to go door-to-door and deliver the floodbusters flyers. And I personally spoke with three or, two or three folks who were home, and said that they would be sure to fill it out, you know, a little bit about their damage, and a few homes that just left the flyers at. And I think there were a number of folks that weren't, weren't home when we knocked on their door, and we left the flyers at the door.
Then let's take another approach. That map that you showed of where the blue area was, how many houses are in that, within that blue area?
Oh, I didn't count them.
Marsha, did you have some idea? You wanna come on up?
Darrell, did you have some idea?
No, I don't.
Okay.
While you're walking up this way, do we know who, do we know the number of FEMA applications within town? Is there a way that we can figure that out?
Please.
It's on the north side.
We'll have to contact FEMA, but we can get that part.
Three weeks later, we don't have any idea how many homes were affected? That's, see, that's, that's causing me real heartburn.
Well, that's one of the things that I do. I have a questionnaire that I thought would be great to go knock on doors and ask...
I know, we all know who you are, but just...
I did. I said Darrell McCall.
Okay, I didn't hear it, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. There was a lot going on. I have, I have a questionnaire. Honestly, I called and said, "Let's go knocking door-to-door and ask people these questions", not just, I mean, I think the floodbusters is great, it's a step, but we're not gonna get that information. I mean, I know, I know a few people who said they weren't around, and they haven't filled out paperwork yet. So, they're dealing with the flood issues, you know? They don't have the time necessarily to fill out all of this stuff, and we can go door-to-door and ask them. We can get a better number of who is really affected and who really needs help. And some of these people may not want to ask for help. They are people that are very proud and are not willing to ask unless we go up and ask them specifically. So, the Red Cross went door-to-door as well, and... I don't know if they went to every home, though.
Yes, they did.
They did. Okay. Is there any way that we can get that information from them? Whatever amount of information? Maybe it's just a simple, here's the, the homes that had flood issues, and here is not. I mean, we don't have to get every little tidbit of information, but I understand that some things are gonna be private.
It sounds like...
Did you have a suggestion on what's next?
Asking the Red Cross and FEMA.
Well, it's 404 South of Danette. The Red Cross was out and went door-to-door. They went to hackers, and I don't know how much they are going to help hackers. I do know they went to Carmen's, two doors south of me. Because of the fact that they were unaware that there was a handicapped person there, and it ended up that I think there's a good possibility they're going to help or get a generator, portable generators, just fun. I don't know how that has all worked out, but I know that those of the two that were raised costs, maybe that's why they need things more and help more. As far as FEMA, FEMA players have been filed, and people are already gaining calls from FEMA.
Justice Bennington?
Just in general, I am really resistant to putting too much of an infrastructure on this, like going through United Way or Red Cross. My attitude is, we're going to be dealing with a limited sum of money. Let's say, just ballpark, maybe $5,000 becomes available to allocate among flood victims. And I think if they're, you know, if we anticipate there are 10 homes involved, it becomes a maximum of a $500 grant per home, that kind of thing. I don't think we're, I'm not willing to give any money up to Red Cross or United Way, and I'm not willing to delay this while we participate in some infrastructure that costs us to have to enroll and register and all that kind of stuff. I think it's as simple as walking around the community. Darrell seems to have a handle on that already, with clipboards with the same information we asked, and get a sample of the size of the problem, start putting the message out over e-blast to our residents that we have this fund available, and on X date, we will allocate monies, that kind of thing. So, I think we can keep it quite simple and not get real caught up in infrastructure.
I'm all for that, and it seems to me we can get a pretty good estimate of what the upper limit is on the number of homes by taking these maps, overlay, and there are homes in them. There's only a certain number of homes. The vast majority of them are appear. A minority of them are in the blue area. Let's at least get a bound for how big the problem we're talking about.
So, my, my only request to the town board is that we have some reason, I mean, some methodology about how we allocate funds, and is it due to, I'm not sure what the right methodology, what is, you know, is, not, your house is not inhabitable, or once again, it's a dollar figure?
Well, it's people who lost their permits.
Greater than X, or, because I think there's a lot of people that have had issues that are outside of Original Town as well, so...
Right.
And those that weren't covered by any insurance.
Right.
So, I think that what Darrell's talking about is a good idea, that it really could be done in a couple of days.
Absolutely.
And you go see everybody in the first day, and then those that you couldn't get to, you can see on a second day.
And, and the questions are, are your damages covered by insurance? That kind of thing. And it, it, I have to tell you, I've done grants in so many different capacities for so many different institutions. It really is more of an art than a science. And you try to apply some science to it, some methodology to it, but eventually, it becomes an art in the allocation. So, I wouldn't get, we're hung up. I'm as nitpicky as they come, but perfection and this don't necessarily match up. Let's just, just seek a good program and not a perfect program.
So, if we wanted to find out kind of the scale of this thing, and we want to go door-to-door, do we have people that have already registered for the floodbusters program that are willing to give time, that will just go door-to-door? They're really going to take that long to do it?
They may, yeah. But, I mean...
Tomorrow. And if not, then we've got to organize a group of people within two days. We can't let this thing go out for another two weeks.
Well, I mean, we can definitely ask those people as well, and we'd send staff out.
Yeah, and I'm sure some of us trustees will go out, you know, so...
Well, I'm one of the 17.
So am I.
Okay.
So, next question?
So, where are we going with this?
And, so does it take a resolution? Or what do we have to do for, like, if we're gonna give up, like, do you shut-offs, like, like some of these recommendations? No shut-offs, you're relieving the fines on this, and all that sort of stuff? Those all seem to need to have sort of policy implications, and what do we have to do to make that stuff happen?
That would be a resolution.
Yeah.
That's what I'd suggest if we have one for today's meeting.
Well, you can give me direction to waive building permits for 60 days. I can do that.
Well, they have to be flood-related.
Right. Yeah. Exactly.
I thought it was, I'm sorry.
That was implied, so, yeah.
I mean, I wrote flood-related, but...
Right.
It says, "For those affected by flood."
Right.
Number seven.
That's not what I said, but...
Yes.
It was implied, so...
I think 60 days.
I was careful when I wrote it.
Or however, 120 days, 160 days, 60...
Well, let's start with 60, and then go from there, and then we'll see if it needs to be extended.
So, that was one. The next one was whether or not we can set up our own thing, and then you'll ask Kendra, and then...
And then we have to set up a program, and how the funds are distributed.
Well, we can, we can add them here.
I would recommend, in terms of that, you know, you should come up with some policy, but I'd just recommend to some set of the board to vent these throughout. I'm not sure we need to go through it.
Right.
For detail during a town...
And we can solicit for funds before we have all the details about how the allocation's gonna work.
And I only suggested the Red Cross based on the fact that you mentioned it's possible we, we may not be able to collect the funds, so we need to find that out.
Can I ask Darrell? Darrell, you also found that some other city was offering a grants program. What city was it?
I just found it, it's Lyons, they have a donation fund.
And Lyons has helped us wrap it. Do some house?
Once, once, hang on. It is a board meeting, so we can't have the back-and-forth to the audience, so.
All right.
Hate to be there. It's gonna be ring later here.
Darrell McCall.
Oh, yeah.
Do I have to give my address?
No.
Okay. Lyons, the town Lyons, if you go and look up Lyons Community Fund, there's a donate now, and they have set the town itself as a fund. So, it's not... So, it doesn't direct you to, like, some other... No, there are, there are a lot of other ways to do it. I mean, people have done direct, things. I have a bunch of families in my sense, school community, that have different ways of their sourcing for funding. So, there's lots of options besides the way and Red Cross.
I mean, I guess, given Lyons' size, they didn't get too complicated, so we might look there.
No, it's pretty simple. It's a basic-
And we might look there for our rules.
But it's maybe, you know, they set it up and it's, I don't know how they distribute the funds, but it's a simple fund that was set up for-
I'm just arguing they have a bridge. I'm just betting like that, yeah. I'm betting they have a pretty simple distribution system too, because, yeah.
Do we have some of the contact Lyons, some of the Lyons, and find out more about how they set up, how they're distributing and all that kind of stuff?
That's fabulous. Call the town managers.
Please do.
And there, I mean, for some of this stuff, people can just bring their FEMA, you know, things that said that they have been contacted by FEMA to show that they have been flooded out so that when they want to get their building permits and things like that, they have proof. That's what they've been, a lot of places have been asking for.
Thank you.
And if they didn't fill out a FEMA application?
An insurance claim?
An insurance claim might work. Some, yeah, some people have insurance but not at FEMA and FEMA will cover vice versa. That's something that shows they've been affected as well.
Yeah, either house or flood insurance claim. What's next on the list? I don't have my machine today.
Yeah, we already talked about the shut offs and the, and the waive the fees for building permits. Those are policy things that take something. Waive the late fees.
On utility bills? Is that late fees on utility bills?
Well, the late fees were on sales tax, but the utility bills were no shut offs and, and I think no late fees are perfectly appropriate with that.
And the state's already granted that to businesses as far as filing sales tax remittance.
Do we know if any businesses in our tax area have been affected?
We can just offer it.
Home businesses would be the ones that may have been impacted, but I haven't received in home businesses.
There's trouble regarding original town.
Another group of, another group of these things relates to trash service and collection of big bulky stuff out front. So when we were in that meeting last week, a lot of the folks said they put their furnaces out and they sat there or they put their other material out there in a big thing that they couldn't carry down, two blocks down to where the dumpster was. And I've driven around, I haven't seen those piles anymore, so I'm afraid we might be too late. I don't know if that's true or not, or if people are just putting them out back or what's happening. But it seems like one possible bulky item go through town with our trash contractor might be something that makes sense, well advertised and people have to notice, put a sign on it that says, you know, remove or don't remove, because that seems possible. And one of the things that's really important also, because no holler's gonna want to collect stuff that's unlabeled at the curb because they're afraid people were just storing it there. So the other thing though that I would argue is, mentions that it has to say really clearly the things that are and are not allowed, you know, for FEMA reimbursement. So you have to have separate piles for white good and other things like that.
Well, this is where she put her first out there. The dumpsters were very plentiful by the town. They were placed here today, the next morning they were picked up and replaced another place like on Second and Third. So I think most of the trash is picked up and there was a lot. But the town was very plentiful with their dumpsters and picking them up and they took whatever, as there was whatever, threw it out.
And that's a pro-
The trash has been pretty well taken care of there. As far as I know, there isn't, I did see some carpet today that, that's just been thrown out recently.
I think the way we did it implied, it makes it so we can't get reimbursed by FEMA though, because white goods went in along those stuff, which is FEMA requires separate.
How do they know? If these dumpsters have been filled and they've already been dumped and whatnot, how does FEMA even know any of this?
I don't know, but either way I would, it's not, if we eat the cost, that's by its name.
Yeah, it's, it can't be that expensive for the slums.
Because it was, that was, that was the one and only thing that was instant town response.
Thanks.
And I believe there was one person that had left a very organized trash system outside their, their curb and I think that it was-
Has it been picked up?
Yes. I think it was just misunderstood as to what that was. And so they didn't want to take something that was so neatly organized.
Okay.
Have we collected a list of resources that we can send out via eBlast and actual letter, you know, mailing to those residents that aren't signed up to eBlast?
As far as FEMA assistance and that kind of stuff or?
Resources, I mean, there's a whole list of things that we've gotten through. Some residents have sent emails, Daryl's sent some things. There's stuff on all different, you know, municipalities' websites and just places you can go that you, you know, you didn't think of, that you could contact such and such for this, that and the other. I mean, some of it you just aren't creative enough on your own to think of, that if you saw on a list, you'd be like, oh, that's exactly what I need. So is there, can we collect that and send it out?
Yeah, we have that information, so. I mean, you're saying we mail it out rather than eBlast.
Just have it available.
Or have it available, or, I mean, there are those that are not set up on the eBlast that we should be sending out a mailing.
Sort of on, on that line is, at this meeting, what people wanted was a point person. Who at town hall is the go-to person for those sorts of issues? As well as the town board has asked that somebody on staff become expert in knowing, you know, what funds we have available to us, for us to get reimbursed for any costs we've had to incur. So, you know, the, the answer person for all those things Deb was just saying, the, where individuals can get financial help, whether it be from FEMA, from Red Cross, from some state fund, from some Boulder County entity, et cetera. And then how we as a town can maximize our reimbursements for our expenses. So if this could be one person preferably or two people, you know, that people know to go to.
Well, it's not gonna be one person.
Or the, how about if the receptionist knows who to, when somebody calls in, who to go to?
For residents, the contact is Lisa Ritchie or Beth Moiski. And then for staff or town purposes, it's a host of people. Paul Millis, Alex Arno, Martin Toof, Dave Heingrich, our civil engineer, are all working with FEMA for town related.
And can I go one step further with this list of resources? Could we possibly make it real helpful by putting it in categories? Whether it's financial assistance or contractor help or whatever? Obviously, you know, I'm interested in this resource list as well. It would just be great even not under emergency to have this kind of list. That would be helpful.
Okay. Next.
Deb, any more on your list?
Uh, one other thing. Sorry, with this list of resources.
Yeah.
I go back to that again. Sorry. Can we make sure that we start with a local preference and then work out around that?
I'd like to hear from people in the audience, what, what they feel they need and haven't received.
Yeah.
As far as this list, I'm happy to see town implement as many as they can beyond the ones, the core ones we've already talked about. Including this potential body system for future-
And I gotta say, just from the town thing, you know, it's going to be important that we, you know, we have recommendations from urban drainage and flood control about what to do with our stuff. And that's obviously going to be, in terms of just town operations, that's going to be the key long term.
Well, if we're kind of expanding on that then, so you're talking about flood plain mitigation and what we're doing for that.
Flood plain mitigation, clearing debris out of the creek, making sure that we get Second Avenue Bridge taken care of and probably exploring since, you know, eventually when Rogers' property develops, there'll be another access point out of there.
We haven't talked access point.
Yeah, second access.
That's on the list.
That doesn't appear to be coming anytime-
You just said it all, just what I was just gonna say. Thank you.
So, you know, if that was going to be developed in the next-
Yep.
You know, 90 days, then it wouldn't be an issue. But since that doesn't appear to be going to be developed in the next 90 days, we'll need at least some reliable alternative access point.
But we can pledge a priority to develop that second access out of original town.
I'm going to recommend that to the board though, that we'll, we'll need an executive session regarding this because we don't own all the property.
Yes.
Can we force easements? Never mind, executive session.
Good evening, PAC, prosecute 208 third. Certainly we were all affected by the flood and in our hearts certainly go out to the people whose homes were directly affected. That being said, last week at the citizens' meeting with the flood control district, it appears that the flooding events are being used to just ramrod through the original proposal that was presented in April without even discussion of any changes, any options with landlords. They just basically presented the original proposal they put forth in April. So I can't support that. As far as my property, there's a growing number of neighbors and things that I think will weigh in at your regular board meeting next week regarding that. A lot of those proposals, the, just the clearing of Old Town and then the road through town is just, you know, unacceptable to most people on that side of the creek. So I'm certainly not opposed to prudent improvements. I think that's in agreement with most people in this town. You know, you can go through lists all the way down the front range, Lyons, Longmont, Erie, Boulder, they've all done extensive flood plain mitigation. And I think actually our Old Town did a lot better than they did in a lot of areas. As of today, there's been no discussion with me regarding anything on my property, no other options.
I don't think we've gotten that far yet in that discussion, yeah.
At that meeting?
Yeah, there's been no ramrod.
Yeah, I was, and actually that meeting, I'm sorry. But that meeting, I was there and everyone can give their own input, but that meeting was just literally to give you an idea of some of the things that could be done and not necessarily-
What will be done.
What will be done.
Right, it's the same old thing they put forth since April. You know, with all respect to the engineers that are involved in this project and everything, you know, I'm not an engineer, but I am a contractor and I've built infrastructure for over 20 years. So I kind of know what's what. I've seen a lot of engineers, different ideas, I've built them and I see why they do things, et cetera. And again, no disrespect to the engineers, but you know, that property's been in my family for 100 years. It's been our possession. So to have a 20-something engineer stand up and tell us how they insist on their maintenance easement and there will be a road through, you know, we will clear all the trees, we will do this, it's just a single.
Yeah.
Well, just from my perspective, I mean, I think we, we will need to come up with some way, I mean, obviously we're gonna have to reconstruct Second Avenue Bridge.
Sure, certainly.
And we'll just have to figure out what's the best way to do that to minimize the impact on, on property owners and hopefully it will be minimal. And we clearly need to make sure that we get debris out of the creek bed so it doesn't get stuck under bridges and things like that.
Dave Heingrich, he called me shortly after the floodwater started to recede and they needed in my property to do some emergency repairs on the west side of the bridge, which I'm happily granted. In fact, they're still in there. And at that time I gave him verbal permission and then I followed it up with an email to do any cleanup they needed to in the creek bed. And I even met with Alex one day over there and I said, I'm up for it. The access agreement that they've sent out is a little bit broad, in my opinion. It will grant access for them to go in and do their cleanup, but it also gives them unlimited access until December 31st to do whatever exploration they need, to do whatever planning they need. I don't know what project they're planning for, you know? I mean, do I support what they're doing? I don't know.
I was at that meeting too, and I'll reiterate just what Deborah already said, is we've seen the same plans you've seen and, and they, I don't think you should feel they're being shoved down your throat or down our throat. They are literally just to say, here's what we had contemplated ahead of the storm. So I think the process will be as orderly as it was gonna be if there hadn't been a flood event in determining what's best for the project as a whole, which we heard your concerns about your land being significantly reduced. I, I wouldn't have any sleepless nights of concern over any assumptions that that's gonna happen. That's gonna be a very orderly process that we follow in determining what's best net-net, you know, for the town and for the residents.
Looking at that, that boss cover design, I mean, I have pictures that I'm gonna present next to the board meeting, how idiotic that would be to install that type of bridge. I think our Oldbury would do better than that new system. And there's always reasons why they want to do that box, that segmented box cover.
And I want to say one other thing. I think the flood in some respects has brought forth some ideas that could be better. And we'll have to explore those ideas. So you didn't see those ideas yet and we haven't fully discussed them either. So when they do come forward, you'll know about them and I think you will feel that it is a better solution because obviously the flood had some lessons learned that we have, you know, cultivated, cultivated from that. And so I'm, I'm hoping that those ideas are explored.
But as I said, it should be prudent in common sense because coal creek is gonna do what it is gonna do and it has done in the past and it will do next time. You know, if, if whatever bridge they put in plugs in, plugs up, you know exactly where water's gonna go and it's gonna top the street. Quite honestly, my property's been, I don't know how many times it's been flooded, but it performed just like it always has in the past, you know? That's what it is and it's in the flood plain and I'm okay with that.
Did your house get inundated as well?
We have a little water in the cellar, but my great grandfather told me it'll never get to the house, so I mean, it-
Cause you're up high enough.
It came within a foot and a half and I don't think it ever got that close. But we have water in the cellar and some furniture damage and things like that. I have flood insurance. Honestly, I don't know why I have flood insurance, but we didn't even make a claim. We were lucky. So thank you, but I appreciate the, I'm open here in this process.
But you will hear from us.
I'm extremely open. So are my neighbors.
Sure. No doubt about it. I mean, nothing can be done without your help.
Yes, appreciate that.
Well, this is where she put her first out there. I have so many things you don't have time to sit and listen to tonight. But about the bridge. Some of us have told staff that the bridge would prevail in Noah's Ark and it has. The money that you're looking at spending on doing the bridge, you need to clean the creek out, stabilize the bank. And the houses on Third Avenue that, on the east side of Third Avenue that was flooded is from the street design. If you would spend the money and fix that street so that it doesn't flood me, I don't have enough fingers and toes about the time I've been up here hollering about that. And now I have pictures to prove it.
And I think Lisa mentioned that earlier, that that is something that she'd like town staff to look at.
Now, if I can apply for a grant and see if I can stop that, then that's fine. But the money that you're gonna spend on the bridge, leave the bridge alone and do the creek and do Third Avenue. And I'll try and control myself now.
Thank you.
Marsha, come on.
210 West Boyan.
I'm pretty much just gonna echo what's been said, but from the viewpoint of, I went up and looked at, at the ditch that got blown out and it's impressive, incredibly impressive, the force of water that had to take out that much concrete. And so I think that anything that happens, that ditch company is gonna so have to be held to what they need to do to safeguard us as citizency, as a, you know, as a town. And I don't know where that legality puts you all and what pressure we can put on them, but that was a huge, huge piece of problem. And the creek defines this part of original town. And one of the things that bothered me about the presentation last week was that they gave us three phases of what is possible to do without giving us any alternatives. There was no other option presented on what it could look like. It was just, this is phase one, phase two and phase three. You know, we can deal with the creek, we can deal with the extra runoff and we can deal with the bridge. But there wasn't another alternative, like, yes, we can open up the creek, but we don't have to make it 15 feet wide. We can just clean out what we have. We can leave a lot of the trees, not tear out every wild will that's there, because that creek really does define a lot of, and people expect to be able to look out their backyard and see a few trees and not a concrete embankment. So one of the things I'm concerned about is that there's enough citizen input in this process and that it doesn't go to committee after committee after committee at this level and then get presented to us and then it's too late for us to have input. It happened with that property up there. There was so much pre-planned that by the time it got to us, the fight we had to do to get traffic taken off Second Street was ridiculous. We got it done, we thank you. And I think this board listens quite well compared to some others that I know. But please either involve some of the citizens or really let us have a larger part in, in what we're hearing instead of coming back and saying, this looks like a great plan, we're gonna do it.
Thanks.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'm sorry, what?
Go ahead.
Someone else? Did you? Sorry. All right. The community ditch, the breaching during the flood, what can we do with the owners of that? Hold them?
We'll have a conversation with, with Freiko about what their plans are and hopefully they understand it and they'll be able to correct it. We are, pardon us, Freiko?
We are.
So.
We own some shares.
So hopefully, we'll have some, be able to communicate back through our ownership interest.
Plus, there might be some things we can do at McCaslin, where debris was collecting.
Yeah, I mean, there's plenty of things that we need to do. We need to make sure that the ditch below the open space is going to function and is cleared out, and that, I agree that we need to keep the Coal Creek in a naturalized state. I mean, I think that's an incredible benefit, not only to Original Town, but the whole area in general. We just need to clean out what the clutter is out there so that there's free flow of water in that area. I don't think anybody's thinking of, I mean, there is some, maybe some bank improvements that will happen right by where the bridge is, perhaps. I don't, I'm not sure what urban drainage is planning on doing.
He said they were going to third cut basically the entire creek.
Yeah, so they're clearly, they don't have the authority.
No, no, no.
We won't give them the authority.
That's not what I heard.
There might be some opportunity to do something further west. There's some Boulder County open space.
Yeah, Boulder County open space. But this is going to be similar to what happens over in the town center, is that we're going to identify things that need to, clearly try to maintain as much as we can, but we'll need to remove, you know, things that are an impediment to free flow of water, so.
What I heard regarding the trees was they will leave as many trees as possible, except those that are threatening to fall, as well as invasive species that get in the way. And I think that one of the willows that you mentioned was mentioning that, and that for every tree they actually take down, they're going to replant.
Yes, but a 60-year-old tree is very different than that.
Yeah, I agree. I think that it's, urban drainage is so dedicated to preserving natural corridors, so knowing that, I'm not really concerned. And certainly, we will reiterate that, but I go up by Rock Creek in the dog park and see some of the remediation they did up there, and I was very impressed with it. They actually made a bench out of something that looked like a fallen tree, and they veined it and everything. I couldn't even tell it was concrete, but they're so into working with the natural look of things, et cetera. So I don't think we have to be worried that if a tree can stay, I think it will stay. That's what I heard.
Trustee Scott.
So I just wanted to give some perspective. I think, I want us to do as many possible things as we can. On this list, any other things you hear about from other communities as well? Perspective-wise, you know, it was terrible, but when you, but I was stunned to hear about the damage in some other communities. So I don't know if you guys heard some of these figures, but Longmount is looking at $150 million, and Erie is looking at $50 million, and Louisville about six, about $30 million, Boulder County about $30 million, in addition to 100 million, 100 miles of road gone. It's just...
In Boulder County?
Yeah. Many others didn't have their numbers together, but...
And we have how much?
Public damage?
Yeah, just...
Two to $300,000 is our estimate.
We're all, yeah, we're lucky.
So is there any point we have not covered that you would like us to cover tonight?
Sure, you asked me about the trail and where it's at and its reconstruction.
So the question is, I wonder what we're doing with the trail and reconstruction, just for...
So, I don't know, Martin or... Do you have Martin come up? He's been working with the county as far as timing. They had a group of volunteers out on Saturday, but let me give them an update about the trail segment over here as well.
Sure. Martin, go down south, just to remind you, noted Boulder County's Parks and Open Space Department coordinated a volunteer workday on Saturday on the single-street trail to restore grade and replace over, I want to say about 800 yards of trail service there. It was a great project, we got very well. And then across the way on McCaslin, we need to do a subsequent project to help reconstruct the Coal Creek Regional Trail. If you haven't had a chance to go over there, see any of the figures, it suffered some extensive damage, and will need to be, in some ways recreated. A new bank will need to be established, and a new trail installed. We've heard of a number of volunteer groups, specifically, the Boulder Valley Ice Group is interested in bringing out in-maps a group to help reinstall the trail material there once the trail base can be established. The larger question of getting the entire Coal Creek Regional Trail, understanding Superior's portion is relatively small in relation to Louisville, Lafayette, and all the way over to Erie, trying to do something in a coordinated fashion with the other entities that are part of the Coal Creek Regional Trail system, and also working with urban drainage to identify which structures will need to be replaced. There are a number of bridges that were damaged or destroyed, and a number of other facilities will need to be assessed. We're trying to coordinate with urban drainage and our partners in Boulder County, but the plan is to replace it. It might not be in exactly the same place, and we'll work with, we'll work with, our engineers have to make sure that it's placed in a place that makes sense for the, whatever the future vision might be for the creek area across the street.
Does Boulder County, are one of their engineers going to look at this? Are we going to recommend to them what to do? Clearly, there's, it's probably going to have to change a little bit in location, and changes in the drainage that would need to be engineered. So how's that process look?
The initial assessment was completed by internal staff, helping assemble some cursory information to help Boulder County Transportation Department staff gather just an initial assessment and AIA. Our colleagues in other jurisdictions all submitted information, and then a couple of engineers from Boulder County staff tried to get to as many of the individual facilities along the entire stretch of trail as possible. Got to, they were able to finish at the end of last week. We're going to get together at some point this week and prepare notes and identify next steps. But it's, again, it's a multi-jurisdictional effort.
Right.
How about the Meadow Lock Trail? Are they looking at Meadow Lock reopening that anytime soon?
I don't, I can't speak to the county's schedule about when they would consider reopening it, when they establish that it's entirely safe. I haven't heard a particular opening date. The damage that's up on, toward, on the other side of the Keybank facility, the Superior Bank of Correctional Building, since it's closed, I haven't been up there to look at it. The area that we can see, the area that we're familiar with down here on this side, had a, you know, during the event, we had a chance to see out close and personal the extent of the damage, and the work with the volunteers that happened with the last, the end of last week, the Boulder County's Parks and Open Space staff, and then the volunteers who did some material replacement over the weekend, went a long way toward restoring this section, but I can't speak to it.
Well, I was on the Meadow Lock before they closed it, about an entire week, and it had some knowledge, but it wasn't, that could have been a very short time if they... In fact, I suspect that they closed it just to keep people from going down, because there were a lot of bikes on it, and I...
Yeah, the rutting that was there before in some areas is quite extensive, and if it got substantially washed out, it could be, it could be treacherous.
It wasn't treacherous.
The county's goal is to make sure that the entire stretch of trail, the entire area is safe before allowing people to use it, just from a liability perspective.
So more than half of what I call the Dirty Bismarck, which is the inside trail of the Morgol, is open, and I wrote on it yesterday.
My wife wrote on some of it, too.
And so if you do 93 and 128, all of 128 is open, all of 93 is open, and all of Marshall Road interior, is what I'm talking about, is all open. But the portion that's not is when you, when you get closer to Marshall Lake, to, well, where we are, basically, to Colton Road and the zigzag trail is what I call it, that portion is closed. So you can get your bike on, you know, 128.
If you run up the wall and then McCaslin, you can do 2/3 of the trail in a roundabout way.
So...
Unfortunately, you just can't use as mayhem per section right here.
No.
So, yeah, is the city, I think some of those areas that you mentioned are city Boulder trail areas, and then also is the county's able to identify, make safe areas that can be, that are open and, you know.
I'm just saying, Meadow Lock didn't need to be closed, but just, from personal experience, I knew that.
All right. Maybe give us an update at the next meeting or something?
We'd like to.
Great, thanks. Anything else? Yes?
So, those board members who want to walk with staff, be calling you tomorrow.
Okay. U36 Spike Ped Overpass?
So a member of CDOT was not able to make it to the meeting, it was short notice, but they did send an email to Alex, which I think I forwarded to you all. Alex is here, do you want to just come up and give them a summary of your conversation with them?
Yeah, I did talk to Papez and Mark Goslin, what they were doing on the US 36 Phase 2 project. They did a couple of things, reaction to your direction last year, and I forwarded them...
Last week?
Last week, your direction about looking at a skewed bridge and putting a pipeline in a, in a bikeway out of skewed bridge. They looked at that, and they said by skewing the bridge, a double-span structure would have to be introduced, because they're at the limits, apparently, the limits of a single span for that type of ped, you know, bike crossing. So they have to put a center pier in the middle.
In the middle of...
They had to put a center pier.
This is the width of it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not only would this increase the cost associated with fabricating the structure and the foundation, it could also jeopardize the fabrication window that we have been provided by the vendor. So they're trying to get the pipeline structure in place by April 1st before water flows in the ditch. So they have a certain amount of time to get it constructed, it has to be fabricated, designed, and so forth. So that was...
Would they be willing to move the pipe to, closer to east and not skew it? I mean, basically, it runs, the pipes run into dirt right now. They don't even go into any, anything on that side of the bridge. So we're going to be doing a lot of grading. Can they just move the, keep the same span and just move it to the... The problem with a bridge is that it runs basically straight, you know, straight into a vista with very little opportunity for it to turn. So if they're not opening to skewing it, could they just move it closer to where the inlet is on the...
You mean, move it one way or the other?
Uh-huh.
I think they have some flexibility with that. I don't have to, I'm not going to ask that question. I mean, right now, they're, if it's not going to change the design, if it's scooting it one way or the other, I think that's, that's still possible.
Moving away from, moving away from a vista would help. I mean, if you just stand, had the opportunity to stand there, so...
Moving into the east or west?
East, closer to Denver, whatever. So I guess that's east.
Doesn't immediately get that, yes.
I have a hard time with that. So, but if you go, what happens with, there's three pipes there that has a center pier right now in the middle of the road to support it, I mean, at least one. So I guess we're planning on blowing that out and not having that center structure that's currently there right now. So if they're not willing to skew it, so that, so that the off-ramp on the Louisville side is not running straight into a Vista building, if they can move it to, closer to Denver, closer to where the inlet actually for the ditches is on the Louisville side, that would be helpful.
Yeah, but we're talking 100 feet, maybe?
100 feet, maybe?
Yep, exactly.
And it has the same topography, basically, in that area, so, and once again, we're going to be doing a lot of grading on our side, so that's not a big deal.
Right. Yeah, I can, I can look into that. That should be doable.
That'd be a better answer than, we want to do it the way we want to do it.
And they, they did send us a sketch of how they thought, how the Campus Drive alternative could be still built with the existing commuter, the bikeway bridge.
So, I mean, I think the Campus Drive could be, if they move it east, Campus Drive could be then built on that same alignment. So, because, you know, Campus Drive couldn't be connected at its current alignment, because you'd be right in somebody's window where the road would run, so...
And I did have our consultants look at Campus Drive and maybe putting sharper curves, 25 mile an hour of curves to make the bridge crossing more perpendicular. So it would be more along the angle of the pipeline bridge would be.
So I was going to, this is not, maybe you know, so this is not aimed at you, so, but is CDOT and Ames Granite, I think they're probably the contractor, or the consortium that's doing this work, are they going to do any community engagement, or they're just going to build what they want to build and not really notify anybody?
No, they're not going to do more community engagement. They're going to involve the staffs, they're going to...
I think that, you know, so this is, if you have any communication with them, I think communities in general would probably want to hear, this is, we're not asking for some, you know, hugely complicated technical meeting, but could you host one at Louisville that Superior residents would come to, or host something?
Or vice versa?
Or vice versa, and I assume that Boulder's going to want to know kind of what it looks like. I would think two community meetings might be well-received. I assume they want some sort of comment, otherwise the contractor's just going to do kind of what the contractor wants to do without engaging any citizen.
Let's bust through that model, huh, Alex?
Right.
Well, it's not the model that they did.
I mean, bust through the engagement model.
Yeah, well, it's...
New model.
I would like to see sort of the same thing they did on the east side of 88th, right? That whole project had a whole bunch of involvement, right? And it seems like it came up to here and then stopped.
Hmm, you got that right.
Well, in this case, I mean, I think the reason why they didn't get a whole lot of public input is they were fighting this April 1st deadline. And, you know, contractor came on board August 1st, and they don't, still haven't closed on the project. So contractor's been jumping the gun on design, and this is one of the things they identified.
It happens to be one of the first things they had, because they're working from east to west, so...
Right, but you know, I assume that Louisville, I mean, I don't want to speak for them, but I know that we're probably going to have some interest in what it looks like.
Yeah.
And we've never seen a drawing of what the bridge is going to look like, so it would be sort of probably nice for them to present us with it, so we could actually...
Louisville has given their support of this.
Have they seen it?
Without looking at it?
Yeah. And their city council hasn't given support necessarily.
That's the only source that we would get from.
I don't even know what we're talking about.
So...
I bet you're right. No, I already asked, one of them.
Right, they don't know.
No, they have no clue.
Yeah, I called.
What are you talking about?
I called one, they're like, yeah, what are you talking about? I'm not really certain what you're, what you're talking about. So I don't think that they're, I suspect that their city council would be interested in hearing something about what the contractors, I mean, I'm not really interested in seeing grade metal steel going across the highway.
Where the rivers are going to go, yeah.
Right. I mean, I'd like to, there should be some sort of theme, like, you know, we spent a lot of time on the DDI.
The arches on the stamper.
The volume from the domes.
So...
Well, I think you, I gave you this, the schedule that they gave me, that we've got 30%, 60%, and 100% design packages.
Great.
So when I get, when I get my 30%, I'm going to share it with you.
Yeah.
We're suggesting that you go ahead of their 30% and say, "We're going to want input to this, too." Just give my heads up.
I mean, I'm not sure what the downside would be to saying that the board would like to at least give me, I mean, give me three slides of what this is going to look like and where it's going to go, you know, as opposed to like, well, we're going to build it because we have to, because we're...
In a hurry.
In a hurry. So...
We had pretty limited input.
And I'm not sure that we've ever seen the final drawing of the DDI. I mean, I know it's been revised a little bit.
Well, what's in the RFP is the drawings that you saw. The ones you saw from the FHA consult, you know, consultant package, those drawings are in, this is the aesthetic package you're supposed to be put. So we'll be getting drawings that hopefully look like that. And so we'll be getting drawings that hopefully look like that.
Yeah, I hope so, because we won't be paying for something different than that.
And in fact, I just got a, what's called an aesthetic package that I need to review and then, I don't think it's the actual plans, but it's kind of their guidelines on, on how they're going to approach.
I don't think we even finalized like what the, you know, I think there was some interest in what the lights look like and all that, but it went into a black box, at least from my perspective, and nothing has been heard back. Once again, I'm not trying to be difficult here, but I think we...
And you're not talking about a six-month-long process, you're talking about a couple of meetings.
Yeah, and I think our residents probably, I mean, that's why we're elected is to do things like this.
Now, what might happen, what might, might be helpful is maybe you have a subcommittee that can meet, because to meet at your schedule is going to be pretty hard to, you know, I get the plan.
Well, we can schedule something in there if we needed to, right?
We have some committees.
Because I don't know, you know, I know when the plans are going to hit, they gave me a schedule, but, you know, how much review, you know, do you need?
I mean, aren't we giving, aren't we giving, isn't there a period for a comment back?
I think they're giving us the exact message they want to give us, is that it's really not a very much discussion.
And that's not okay.
You know, I think...
Then maybe, I mean, maybe everything is fine and we'll have like, oh yeah, great, go build that, but my guess is that we'd like to at least see it. I mean, we are, as a collective, spending a whole bunch of money on this project. I think we owe our residents that we've actually looked at and weighed in on it.
Make that.
So Alex is...
Thanks, Alex.
Alex.
Yeah, once again, I don't mean to be adding more work onto, I mean, staff is very busy right now. I'm not trying to add more work on it and this really shouldn't be, I mean, it really should be coming from them, so.
But it's not.
Just given the time pressure that they seem to be under, and I'm not sure what, why they're so, why they're compressing this so much.
It seems to me like we're the only, we're the community that's, I mean, it seems like Louisville's not, it'd be helpful if another community or two, Boulder, or would join in with us and say, hey.
Or if it's just one, maybe we're simpler. Maybe the fact that there's only one that wants input and they don't have to deal with the other two, that makes it even better.
It's easier for them to blow just one community off.
It's hard to, they say Louisville supports it when Louisville doesn't even know about it.
It might not take much of an email over to Louisville to say, hey, what do you know, do you know what you're supporting?
I think that's where the direction's coming from. Does Malcolm say they support it?
Maybe they'll be fine.
Well, I think the planning director is where I can...
So, which is great, you know, more, more toward to him, but it seems like he should probably communicate that to their elected body. I don't know, that's, would be my perspective.
We appreciate you communicating it to us.
Yeah.
Please continue to do so.
As the plans come forth, I'll pass it on.
Immediately to us, yeah.
To you.
And in terms of the process, isn't there like a, there's a comment period? I mean, surely there's some sort of comment period.
You get to make comments, right?
Right. We have, we have about a month to get, you know, staff...
That's plenty of time.
Actually, it's two.
Organic comment or anything.
So we have an interchange committee that is set up between us and Louisville.
Yeah.
Is it time for those to get...
Great, that might be it.
Well, we need something to respond to, I think.
Yeah, well...
You know, once they submit something, we can get the committee together, right?
Takes a long time to set those meetings up.
I think within the next, within the next month is, is the time that we have to provide input. So we may, maybe we'll look at your schedule, maybe we'll anticipate when the plans are coming in and set up a time for the board to, to discuss those and have CDOT come over.
Great.
And when you get them, send them to us.
CDOT will be at the meeting tomorrow morning at 7:30 at the US 36 Community Solution.
My guess is that they won't have a...
It's the CDOT Rail and Special Projects Manager. This is a special project.
So if anybody's going, it could, might be a good time to bring it up and say that, oh, by the way, we understand there's a bridge being built.
We're expecting.
If we see it.
You know, I imagine these contractors incentivize to do it faster and cheaper, so that's what we're doing.
That would be my guess is that...
So we have to keep an eye on it.
It's a design, build, operate and maintain. The sooner he puts, you know, you know, the money is for him, so he's, he has a time period to get it open by a certain date and start putting some money.
Which is great, I don't think we're trying to delay anything here. They clearly have had drawings now for, I assume they've had drawings for quite a while. If they would have sent them to it, we could have already had comments back to them about it.
Well, the 30% design is this month, so.
Okay, good.
Yeah, great. It would be a good time.
We'll make time to look at it.
Is any of your staff going tomorrow morning?
I'll be there for the first part.
I see Mayor Groppi.
I don't know if this...
No, I think...
Maybe that random guy from Louisville.
Wait at the mayor's office, the mayor's office in Louisville.
The random guy from Louisville.
So, all right, thank you, thank you, once again, I, I'm sorry that you have to be the intermediary here, so, but it's, I think it's important for us. I mean, they say the reason they want to build the bridge is because it's, the aesthetics are so much better compared to anything else and they haven't sent us the aesthetics.
Well, yeah, as soon as that, we get that design, we will send it on to the board.
Great. That would be great. In the meantime, if you could ask them if they can, you know, it doesn't sound like this, I mean, I looked at it, the length of the triangle, I mean, I was just doing, going back to high school geometry, the length of the skew does not seem to be huge, but if it's, if they can't possibly do it because it's 30 feet longer, then just see if they can move it east.
A squared plus b squared equals...
I believe I remembered, I believe I remembered that, yes.
It's only right triangles.
Does the pedestrian bridge have a center support right now?
Oh, the one that...
No, it's clear span.
Yeah, which is, and it's three times, so clearly there's something.
It's wide.
Yeah, it's probably three times as wide is what they're talking about here.
That was a specially ordered steel bridge.
Yeah, it was a pre-fab, yeah.
And it's, so he's talking about special ordering and being a problem. I think I heard that.
Yeah, I mean, clearly you can build something that would be a clear span since it's, the span is much less than, as you pointed out, the current pedestrian bridge. So, but like you say, it's probably special steel or something.
Well, it was, actually, it's, yeah, it is special steel and, but they were ready to go with concrete if the steel prices didn't come down. But the RTD, the RTD engineer designer was involved with that bridge.
Yeah.
And we were going to get that bridge.
Yeah, I was going to say, we got to provide zero input. I mean, they gave it to us, but they wouldn't change anything.
Well, he loved it.
Provide comments and the chairs were allowed.
It took, well, over a year, I think, to get comments and design it.
Yeah, he loved it and I think it's good.
Howard Pedestrian Bridge?
Yeah.
RTD.
I wanted to paint it differently than any of that.
We're going to have Bridge V with similar design.
They even had a naming contest.
Yeah, we did.
Right?
They did, yeah. I forget what they named it. Best, best entrant I heard was Clifford the Big Red Bridge.
Clifford the Big Red Bridge.
But that didn't win.
All right, well, thank you for putting it on the agenda and thank you for looking into it, appreciate it. So, I mean, it's, I just, I think everybody understands this, but Louisville's not going to have money to build Campus Drive, we're not going to have that part of, but they want to build Campus Drive and Avista wants to build Campus Drive and we're not going to be putting it on our side until the town center's in, so I just don't want to do something that boxes us in down the road.
Exactly. Great plan.
Okay.
Great comments.
And I think CDOT's heard that message.
Good. Anything else to come before the board this evening? Saying none, making a journey. Thank you.
And there's hearing and then there's listening.
Yeah, yeah.